We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is Mrs. Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Gordon, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the City Commission is hereby called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission in City Hall 201 North Secretary in the City of Palacca to begin at 6:00 PM or soon as possible thereafter on Monday, August 12, 2019. The purpose of the meeting is to consider a proposal for Florida Aviation Professionals LLC to lease airport building W4 and one half of hangar W9 at the Palacca Municipal Airport. Item table on 8/8/19. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We will let them. Roll call.
Commissioner Rufus Gordon.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown.
Present.
Here, Cheryl Hill.
Here.
We're all present in your form.
Thank you. Having already established our pledge and our dedication, we'll move forward into item, the only item on this agenda, which is proposal that requests for lease. Turn it over at this time to Mr. Holmes, who's had an opportunity to vet the issues of the force.
Clean your packet. You have a lease agreement. There are actually two lease agreements. I don't think you have the second agreement. It's very similar, but you have a separate lease agreement for each of the two structures that are being leased. One of the structures, the one that you have featured in the agreement that's before you is the hangar. Hangar is actually one half of Executive Hangar W9. And the other lease agreement applies to the old terminal building. You'll recall when you were here before that I pointed out some issues with regards to the lease rate because it was so, so, so very small with regard to the old terminal building. Subsequently, as a matter of fact today, Mr. Yule explained to me that they had put the wrong numbers in in terms of the amount of square footage of the terminal. The original lease proposal had 2,929 square feet and the old terminal. And Mr. Yule explains to me that that amount is actually only about 1,200 square feet, which, which obviously makes the first, the, the rate per square foot much, much different. With that having been said, I don't have a problem with the, um, the lease rate. The other terms that the, the commission asked us to talk about, one had to do with the term. We had talked about whether or not they might be willing to go something more than a year. It's my understanding that they aren't interested in going more than a year in the lease. They want the option, or they'd like to have the option of perhaps renewing for a second or third term, but it, but it in terms of, at least it's my understanding, that in terms of the lease that they sign, they only want a 12-month lease. And then lastly, the question had to do with insurance. Actually, you'll see at utilities, where I had a question, Mark, were they going to pay all the utilities even though, even though they were only occupying one half the hangar? The answer to that question at the last meeting was yes, they do plan to pay all the utilities for the hangar, even though they're only occupying half of it, because I guess there's not much activity going on in the remainder of it. The only other question had to do with insurance, both as to, uh, uh, coverage and limits. It's my understanding that, um, that the coverage is $2 million for personal injury and death and $500,000 for property damage. Those coverages are the same as I recall off the top of my head that we have in the water taxi agreement. They would appear to me to be, uh, okay, appropriate. I mean, naturally, when I represent the less law, I want as much coverage as possible, but John tells me that he checked with another, at least one other airport and their, their coverages were similar. And again, I think it's the same thing we've got in the water taxi agreement, so it, from my perspective, doesn't make a lot of sense to treat them differently than the water taxi. Let me get to insurance, because I'm having a hard time getting to it right now. Get to the insurance, uh, insurance, I see it here. Notice that this one still has $1,200,000. I thought we, we had said it was going to be $2 million.
It's spelled out 2 million then parentheses 1. I'm sorry, I said mispronounced.
So it's actually spelled out 1 on both, so let's call that 2. And I think that it's spelled out John in the other one. The lease I don't have in front of me, it's spelled out 2, 2. So let's assume that, or let's, with good contingent, our discussions with the fact that it's 2 million personally injury and bodily, uh, injury, personal injury and death, and 500,000 property damage.
500 is it spelled out?
I'm sorry.
500 is spelled out.
The 500 is, but not the 2 million. The other copy, I think the other copy does have the 2 million. And then the only other question that I had had to do with flight operations, because technically this is a premises policy and depending up on how the policy is written here, but normally applied to incidents that occur on the premises, it's possible in our world that the city would get sued for flight operations and that, that might not be covered by our premises insurance. You'd have to look at the policy to tell. For instance, as Cheryl and Justin, some of you know, homeowner's insurance actually covers things that doesn't, a lot of times covers things that doesn't happen at the home, but I wouldn't know that without looking at the policy. So I had to ask John about some form of flight operations insurance. It doesn't matter to me who carries, how it's carried, or what the insurer is. I was just looking for some peace of mind that they had some flight operations insurance, and I don't know what the answer to that question is as I sit here right now.
Let me go first for just a second. First of all, we apologize for contributing to some, the confusion at the last meeting with providing the wrong square footage for the terminal building. I'm sorry about that. Now let Daniel talk about insurance.
Do you want to go right into the insurance questions? I'm going to go ahead and give you my presentation again.
We, we don't really need a presentation. I just need to go to the insurance question.
Okay. Go ahead with your question then. I don't fully understand what you were asking a second ago. If you just give me the question one more time.
You bet I will. No problem. My statement is that the insurance that we've required has to do with premises insurance, premises liability, meaning our facility that we own, that you're going to be occupying. The easiest example of what it would cover would be if somebody tripped on the side or walked into a problem on the flight line or something like that, then there's conventional coverage of that kind of insurance would apply. A question had to do with what happens if somebody is involved in an accident with one of your instructors or rental on one of your airplanes. It's conceivable that the city would be sued there too, because in today's world, you can just sue everybody who has any nexus whatsoever to the defendant. So my question was, and when I talked to John this afternoon, he indicated that he had checked with the land and that they had a million-dollar policy on their airport for flight operations or flight instruction. And I told John this afternoon, when he told me about the error in the square footage, that'd be great. If you had a million dollars that applied directly to flight operations, then that'd be fantastic, because then the city would have the comfort level of knowing that we have premises protection, we had for bodily injury and property damage, and we had a separate coverage or separate policy or separate protection for flight operations, even if it wasn't on the airport. So the plane falls out of the sky in interlocking, not on the airport, we still would have some protection if we got sued. And, uh, but then today, in talk, or just a few minutes ago, and talking to John, he indicated that, that, I guess there's an issue with, with you having that, or you might have it through a separate provider or something like that. So if you want to address that issue, that'd be helpful to me.
I'll be glad to give you all the information I know about it, because this is, when we first had this idea, we spoke with AOPA, and if you fly, you might know there, uh, there's sort of an advisory council.
Aircraft Owners and Policy Association, for those of you who don't know, AOPA is a...
Right. So they can, they do have some lawyers on staff there, and we, we ask these questions. And the way it was explained to me is that the policy for instruction on the aircraft, it's insured up to a million dollars for rental and instruction, is that for the building that you're doing flight instruction in, as long as it's used for, for training and you don't have a sports bar in your flight school as well, then it would cover for that up to the million dollars, because it's, it's being used for the flight training. But obviously, if you're doing things other than just using it as a flight school, then they're not going to cover that sort of thing. But I always explain the policy will extend to the building.
You're talking about having the same policy through AOPA, deal with your premises as well as your airplane. You're not talking about having policy for the premises and then your AOPA policy separate. You're talking about just having one policy cover everything.
The way I always explained it to on the phones, that's what it appears to me. And of course, we'll be happy to change whatever needs to get fixed up there, but...
Yeah, I'd have to read it to see, but normally I wouldn't expect that to be the case. I would, I, in other words, normally I would expect that AOPA policy that applies to an airplane, I wouldn't expect it to give you premises protection. I just, I just wouldn't. I mean, somebody's out there, for whatever reason, and trips over something, which we have had happen, by the way. I wouldn't expect that AOPA policy to cover it. So I was assuming that you were going to have premises liability, and all I was talking about was whether you had airplane liability. I wouldn't have a problem if your AOPA policy that covered your airplane is a million bucks. I wouldn't have a problem with it satisfying the issue of your flight operations, but I, I have, I have some discomfort with it being what, what covers the premises. I do have some discomfort with that.
Well, that's understandable. It is certainly odd. You wouldn't expect your car insurance to cover your house, and, and I can understand the confusion. That's why it was a hard thing for me to understand at first, too. But there is a big difference between insurance for flight training and just have an airplane insurance. So that's probably something, we should print that contract, and we should sit down and read it rather than me trying to tell you.
Yeah, for your own protection too. For your own protection, didn't you?
Of course.
So I, I just looked it up. They actually have a new hangar protection policy with AOPA, P O A, so, and maybe, and maybe what they're talking about. Looks like they introduced it in 2015.
So it, it, like Mary will tell you, you know, you, insurance is like any other contract, the cover just spelled out in the policy. And so if it's, it could cover a lot of things, it could cover not a lot of things. So really, the, the detail is the question of, of the policy that you have. If it extends to the premises, no question asked, and the example you gave is a good one. My auto policy isn't going to cover my house if somebody trips on it. And that's a good analogy. So that's, it's just a matter of us having coverages on those fronts, from my perspective.
I can understand that perspective.
And then, may I also address the, the way I discussed it this afternoon, and we'd like to say that, you know, they've been talking about a year, they've been talking about a year lease the whole time this, this discussion's been going on, but I'd like to go, and I think they, they would agree to it, and we changed the wording on that, that would, would be a current one-year lease, with the language added to renew and on an annual basis and be subject to negotiated rental rates after year two. So, and that, I mean, we'll change the wording in the real agreement to, to do that, because now with the, with the changing of numbers, you know, the rental rates went up, I mean, per square foot, we put this, you know, close in line to what we think it should be. Not changing any dollar amount for him on his rent.
My issue is, my issue is we're about to spend $7,000 on a one-year lease, and if we're going to make any type of concession as a relation to this particular project, I'd rather see a multi-year lease in place. And that's kind of been what we've done in the other situations. I just don't, I just don't think that a one-year lease with six months of, of reduced rent makes a whole bunch of sense from a financial standpoint for what we're looking at. I mean, if we're in the, if we're in the business of breaking even off of what we spend, then I, I just don't think it makes a whole lot of sense. I think, you know, the question before was, are you willing to enter into a multi-year lease? The response was yes. You know, I think at minimum of a two-year lease at least makes some sense, as soon as understanding that at least the rental income is going to deal with whatever costs are associated with what's in place. I think our rent is probably as cheap as you're going to find rent anywhere in this region. And at the end of the day, if you're operating right now without base, having the, the least expensive base in the region makes a whole bunch of sense. And the base that's surrounded by everywhere makes a bunch of sense. And if you feel like the business is going to be viable in two years, is an out-of-the-ram possibility for a commercial lease.
I can understand how you see that, and especially since you're looking at a $7,000 air conditioner or somewhere near abouts, it sounds like. And one should understand that the request for a one-year lease isn't so I can move in a year. This is a startup company, and we all know they're not guaranteed to succeed. There, there needs to be a little protection in there for myself, financially speaking, just in case this goes south. I don't expect it to. I expect it to go very, very well, but you have to think about the alternatives there. Addressing the, the cheapest rent on the block, that, that is true, you are the cheapest place, but only by a couple hundred dollars.
Only by a couple.
I mean, talking about a couple hundred a month, however, you know, there is other facilities with much more traffic and more infrastructure, and, you know, it's a possibility there, so you are right, it is, it is cheaper, but...
And the gas is cheaper.
The gas is a little bit cheaper. That is true.
So we, we vetted this out, so we know we're cheap. That part we do know. And we know that it, it leads to safety for you. It's in the middle of every major thoroughfare in north central Florida, and it's a heck of a good place for you to start your business, considering the fact that you're getting your rent cut in half. That's my comment. Everyone else may feel differently, but I just wanted the record to reflect on my comments. And we'd love you to be here for 20 years.
I would love that.
And, you know, and we want to see that happen. I don't think it's anybody on this commission that doesn't want to see your business come and see you succeed. And I can tell you, for me, to see you as a young man standing before us and be as confident and articulate as you are, for me, it's a great thing, and, you know, we want to see that business succeed. We want you here in Palacca. And I think we're taking the appropriate steps to incentivize your move. But I also think that, at the end of the day, you got to understand that in business, if it ain't made dollars, then it makes sense overall. Government kind of has a relaxed standard, unfortunately, but for us, you know, we want to make sure that we're not giving away the baby with the bathwater. We want to make sure that you're put in a position where you can succeed, and we just want to make sure that we're being responsible with the dollars that come from this, from this, from the taxes that this community. And I think with all those things in place, for me, I feel a heck of a lot better if I had a young man sitting in front of me who says, I know I can sustain this thing for two years, and I can make it work. And we believe that, and I stand here strongly to say that a two-year lease is an out-of-the-ram possibility. Most businesses take three years before you figure out whether you're going to succeed or fail, not six months. And you've already been operating, so you've got some idea as to what you're doing. And the only thing this can do is enhance your operation. So that's just my, that's just my consideration. Is there any more comments on the commission?
I wholeheartedly agree with, with what you said, but I'm just, and I know my comment last time and your comment with, if you are a full-pan customer, or whatever. But I think my question is, what changed from Thursday to now with the possibilities of you extending the lease? That's what I'm a little bit concerned about.
Well, you, well, you have a partner in this, and if he could be here, you know, this would be a little bit easier. Out of respect for him, I didn't want to give you an official answer, because I don't think that's the right way to do business.
Right. And I, and I say that then, but again, if you, understanding that you do have a business partner and understanding that you do, again, I mean, it's, it's literally, we're slicing something in half for six months with the hopes of you, with the hopes of you going off their word saying that you want, you want to extend after you continue to pay. Again, in order to, in order for me to feel comfortable, I just need a little bit more commitment on that end. I mean, insurance, yeah, but for the level of commitment that we have with anything, it's, we've done it with every other person that has come before us, and we just need to see that level of commitment, especially with what we're putting in.
I can understand why you'd want to see that. I, I do have trouble understanding why this particular building is necessary for a two- or three-year lease, it seems to me.
I'm not worried about the building. I'm worried about people who come before us wanting us to do something for them, and they're not essentially doing anything for us in return, but we're still the ones that are putting everything out. That's what I have a concern with. It can be you, it could be somebody else coming from around the corner that have, want the same thing. I would still want the, that to be, you know, in the forefront of everything, even if it was me coming before the commission. If they want to see me, you know, have a greater commitment to making sure that the business that I want to bring to the city is, you know, I have to do it.
I understand that, and I do think maybe I wasn't clear enough on Thursday when I expressed what I would like to do for the city in return. I, I don't know if you've been to the property or seen the building. It's in pretty decent shape, but it needs some work. It's not been rented for a while. It's got softening hanging down, some holes in the drywall. We've got some carpets that need to get cleaned. It needs to be painted and power washed. I'm not a contractor, but I estimate that $80 an hour is going to cost maybe $2,700 to $3,000 to fix this. I'm willing to do it for you. I have six students that are waiting to get started right now, and if they all flew 40 hours, this is just off the airplane, you're looking at $45,000 in gross revenue. That's 7% sales tax on that airplane. When the students come in here, they're not just here for an hour, they're buying food in your city. Sometimes they just take an afternoon and they might go around and see some other things. And a lot of my students have gone on to purchase an airplane and then put it in a hangar at Palacca. So think about what we're bringing besides just the half rent for six months. This building is bringing a lot more focus to the Palacca Airport. I can't tell you how many people I've brought out there and they said, God, this is great. I can't believe it's here. I didn't know about it. I want to put this thing on the map for you guys, and really, you know, you're going to see some income here, and flight schools aren't the easiest thing to move either. Once they're in, they're in, you know, it's, it's a hard thing to move.
For the support of my points.
Again, I, what I like to see, you know, and I support you wholeheartedly, but again, some skin in the game, like you want to put some renovation in there, I will have to probably run that by our attorney to make sure that whatever renovations you're putting in, it does conform with the policy or safety and the like. So we just, we need to make sure that that is clear. But I'd like to see that $7,000 investment from the city to put that AC unit in there two years. I can see it being paid off, you know, with the rent and your, your gas or air, I mean, I would think, you know, if we maybe put a clause in there, if you wanted to do one year, put some clause in there and say, hey, well, we split the, split the cost of the unit, $3,500. So that way, we don't take the full $7,000 hit if, if they decided not to go for the second year.
But I think that was something we clarified in that last meeting, that we were going to be doing that anyway.
Right, because we would...
But, I mean, we were, eventually we would have to do it, but I think the reasoning of that has been expedited is because we're trying to operate, we're trying to, and I, and I agree, but I just want to make sure that...
Give him the open by September first.
Right, right, right.
Well, just letting you make one mention, there's nothing in the lease, and this is the first time I've even heard, that the LSC is looking at making $3,000 worth of repairs. The lease, what? The lease says that the city's going to make all repairs that are outside of the wall, roof, structure, at, at the city expense. And, and the only thing the LSC's going to do is light switches and bulbs and things of that nature. So, I mean, that's a new, that's a new issue that hasn't, that wasn't even raised to me before, before right now, and strictly under the lease, it wouldn't be something I could enforce. So just, just in terms of, and I realize everybody is looking to try to make something good happen, and, and, but, but for me, I have to rely on what's in the written document. That's what I'll fall back on in six months or a year from now, if something goes south. I've got to fall back on what's here. It won't be what everybody thought they were intending, or the fuzzy feeling that everybody has about starting a new venture. And I, and that's just, that's just the hardened fact life of it, hardened, and the life of it for me, the fact of it for me. So with that said, if he's talking about doing $3,000 worth of repairs up front, then, you know, we ought to add that to the agreement.
And maybe make a point that, that no matter what happens, we've got to repair that air conditioning system to keep mold out of the building, so no matter what happens, that is not, it's not like it was a, you know, not working and we weren't planning on fixing it. We have to fix this air conditioner no matter what happens.
Okay, so...
I was wondering, is it not possible to talk to your partner to find out if you all can work out the two-year leasing, another year for you all to be in there?
I don't believe that's going to go. We've discussed it all weekend, and it's, it's not in the, it's not in the cards, Chris.
So, so forgive me, but again, I, I have to look at, from a legal perspective, you've got a new startup LLC which has no assets. I was told early on that y'all wouldn't personally guarantee the obligations of the lease. So as I'm sitting here right now, I'm looking at a entity that's going to be LSC with no assets, that really couldn't, if I sued, I couldn't get anything from anyway, in all probability, if I had to sue. No one will personally guarantee the lease, so you've got no personal skin in the game, and even in spite of all that, you won't go a two-year lease. Now, it's hard for me, having been where I have been for the last forty years, to see a lot of skin in the game from your perspective, or a lot of confidence from your perspective that you're going to be making an operation go, in spite of everything you just said. And we all also know that having a high-traffic area for airplanes isn't a good place for a flight school. Having a low-traffic area, area for airplanes is a good thing for a flight school, which is what you got out here.
That's true. This practice area has a 10-minute flight from all the other airports on the east coast. And when I said high-traffic, I meant high-vehicle traffic. People that are going to pass by and say, oh, I think I'll take a lesson today. And they become a student.
Okay, sorry.
So we brought this back for purposes of seeing if we can make this go. Had the conversation. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns from the commission?
Have we leased anybody else properties for the year lease?
We have.
The helicopter operator wasn't a one-year lease out of that building.
He didn't ask for concessions either, did he?
No, he left tools on the wall when he left, didn't he?
He didn't leave it. He didn't leave six months rental to him. Any comments from the commission?
I can take them.
From the commission?
I really would like to see us find a way to get here. I think that we've had too many things pass us by that might have helped us, and things that maybe will help him and he quit some jobs for some other folks that are here. I would hope that the business would be like a pebble in a pond that it would be the brick that's thrown in the pond and the pebbles will bring other businesses and other interests here. If we let him go in there for a year and it doesn't work, the building is up to par and up to standard, is there be a place to let somebody else come in and rent? Most of the time when you start a new business, you don't know whether you're going to be there or not. And I know we want him to have some skin in the game, but I think if we get in here, you might want him out of there in a year's time.
I mean...
That's a very logical point.
You might, you might want him out there in a year's time. We might get there, we don't think that they've done what they want and what we want them to do. And that's the easy way to say so, without any hard feelings. You didn't do it, and you didn't make it, and, but sometimes we've got to open up and have a vision to pick out the rocks and take a small chance. Is that costing us?
I was just going to say, bigger than a small chance.
Well...
I mean, is there any way that we, that you can take back, or that we could say, coming to the point where it's time at a year, we can revisit to, I mean, bring several things into consideration if it needs to be extended?
That's already, that was what I was trying to draft before, which was a 12-month reconsider in the lease.
But you know that, you know, that's not a contract. For me to say 12 months with the option to renew for two years, if we can agree upon price, that's not a contract you can enforce. It's, it's still going to be a 12-month lease because, right, it's, it's not really a, it's not really a... lease, because, right, it's, it's not really a, it's not really a one-year lease, it's just, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna make everybody feel better by saying we're gonna talk about extending after a year, but you can't enforce it, and so, yeah.
Hey, who's gonna make this motion?
I'll make the motion that we make them do it for you, have a new year's lease, I think that we need to have a chance to get some new businesses in here.
This is a motion on the floor, to enter into a one-year lease agreement after the operations of the flight school. Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing none, motion fails. I want to see you succeed, I want to, I want to believe in you. Are you open to eighteen months since you're getting six months free? Right now...
That's what I was trying to say. Is that something you can decide without this partner being here, it's just the same thing?
I can only make fifty percent of that decision, I don't have a problem.
Then you're gonna make a phone call.
I think I could.
That's all, man?
All right, we're gonna stay in recess for, for three minutes.
Yeah, the guy that is sick, and he...
Well, we still agree with twelve months is the, is all we're willing to give you.
I'll make the motion that we do not accept this. It's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Yes, second. Is there any further discussion? For me, I, I want to see them succeed.
Who's John, this John?
So...
No, it's partner.
No, sorry, no, sorry. I think, I mean, none of us don't, I mean, we, we all want to see them succeed, however, I just feel that there's nothing from, we could have made this vote the other day, I mean, I don't really truly think that there was nothing that came back to us that was different outside of a few numbers, like, I don't think that, that you, I don't think that you all, I mean, I'm not saying that, from, I'll say from my, from what I'm gathering, you know, you want us to do something, but then again, on the outside, you're not really doing anything for us. Yeah, you're saying that all of these things are gonna happen, but there's no guarantee, just like there's no guarantee of the success of your company, which we want it to be successful, but there's no guarantee that you're gonna have somebody that drive by the airport and see a, a, a airplane flying and stops and saying that I want to take an airplane lesson today. You're not, there's no guarantee for any of that. And even if we could say, no, you don't pay the twenty-eight, the twenty-eight, three thousand dollars or whatever it is that you want to pay to fix the, what you're, I mean, to fix the...
To renovate that.
To renovate the building, we, I mean, we, we don't, we didn't ask you to do that, so I think those things can still be taken into consideration, and that money can be put elsewhere, which could be put towards the extending of that timeframe, you know, I just feel like, I don't, I, the time, it, we've always been talking about skin in the game here, and right now, I don't feel like you have skin in the game.
I'm sorry that you feel that way.
You don't have to be sorry, at all.
Based on the calculations, the rental income of the twelve-month period looks like it's gonna be a little over eleven thousand bucks, minus whatever you do in repairs, so, somewhere around four to five thousand dollars in rental income for the twelve-month period that you're gonna have. So, with that being said, any further discussion from the commission?
Got a question about the, I guess, the fuel, in terms of what we would get back on the fuel, based on the number, if he just did this, just an average, of how many flights per day, and the amount of fuel, what would that look like? Nobody had it, yeah?
I have looked at that, every lesson cost me approximately fifty dollars in fuel, if we call that about eight gallons, is that correct, based on your prices there? And, and that's a pretty conservative average, it depends on what you're going to do with the airplane, but I could tell you on average, that's each lesson, and I'm expecting about four lessons per day when this thing opens, so, two hundred dollars in fuel sales there.
And you're operating five days a week?
Six days a week.
Any other discussion?
I, I still ask, do we have other people that, that we do rent from and stuff like this, that, that, do they have to come up with more than a year? Or are we treating everybody the same when it comes to...
We treat, we treat everybody the same who asks for concessions, or asks for some expenditure, some additional expenditure from the city, so he's not being treated any differently as it relates to that. The last person who asked for something as related to air conditioning, and signed a five-year lease, is the nominal lease, that's the only difference between the two. And far less hazardous activity, so, I don't think that part of it is, is not a situation where anybody's been treated any differently, I think it's just a matter of trying to find some middle ground to get this thing done, and so, the numbers are out there, the building's empty, you can, what you'll be, in essence, turning away is a few thousand, about five thousand in rent, plus whatever you get from fuel sales, and, that's where you are.
I have one question. The, the question would be, what if he had rented that building, and he just flew out there, because people can fly in and out as much as they want anyways, and he just used it and, and, and had the people in the airplane anyways, and just not came before us with that, what would that look like? If he rented, no, I'm just saying, if he rented, if he, if he rented the space for office space, put the contract out there, we have people who come in all the time with flights, they don't have to check in with anybody, or whatever, and he's, and he, and he used that, uses airplane to just care, care people...
Are we gonna be inspecting to make sure that he's still not using our building, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, no, no, just, just period, that, that's how the operation work in terms of our lease, how do we do checking balances with the people who are currently out there, and what, what they're doing? Because he could have really just got the building, he could...
So, he could have just run a legal flight school?
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, that's what, well, basically, that's what, he could have just rented the space, and still ran the operation, because we don't really inspect what people do out there, as it relates to...
For, for the purposes of what we're doing, let's stick to this motion, and let's make a decision based on the motion that's on the floor.
Well, we was on a comment, weren't we?
We are, but the comments have to pertain to the motion.
The comment was a open comment.
Okay, well, we want to close it and make it pertain to this motion, because the motion is to deny, and so, as it pertains, not to the operation of the business, but as it pertains to whether we're gonna accept it or not, what's on the table?
Okay, I have one more question. If we let him go in there and he left, what, what would we lose? If we did repairs and stuff on the building, the building would be there for somebody else to use without having to do it, and it would be in better shape than what it's doing now, and he would have been in there and paid something, and there's nothing being paid, or nobody in that building, and nobody's been in there for a while, so, what, what's the downside to, to, to rental, if he leaves?
The only downside to me is if something happens, that's, that's the only downside. But that said, any more discussion on the motion?
Who's second? I'm ready to second.
I do.
Motion, say it. Commissioner McCaswell. Seeing none, further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Borum?
No.
Commissioner McCaswell?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Go back in, I'm so, I'm so sorry.
So, what?
Yes. The motion, a second motion.
They're going to yes and then no.
Yes and no, yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Mayor Hill?
Motion fails.
I would, no.
I'll hold yours.
Yes, okay. Motion fails, I have to run another motion.
You need to go talk to your partner and come back, I need to pay off that deal.
I like to make a...
Y'all need to go...
I like to make a motion...
I see y'all with confused looks, if they're upset or not.
I like to make a motion that you consider the eighteen-month term, work with your partner, if it's something that you really wanted to pursue, six months is not really something that, and we're giving you six months, like the mayor said, I, we really want to see you, see, see you succeed, so, in that, we're not telling you, no, to go away, we really want to bring things to Polat, so, if, I want to make a motion that you come back with at least an eighteen-month agreement, that's my motion.
Your motion is authorize, is authorize the city to enter an eighteen-month agreement with the flight school, with the provisions, based upon the discussion and recommendation with council, to be included in that?
Correct.
All right, motion on the floor is a second. Second, by Commissioner Brown, is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Horwath? Commissioner McCaswell? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Mayor Hill?
No.
Motion passes forward one.
Okay, only report now, get on it.
All right, buddy.
We want to see it happen, we really do.
Whatever you can do, man.
Any further discussion from the commission?
I'm sorry.
Seeing none, roll call.